Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, I'm going to lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Covert's going to lead us in the invocation. If you'll stand with me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. For which it stands. For liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just come before you tonight thanking you for the many blessings that this community in this country has been given. We ask that you put your hand on the meeting tonight, Lord, and help us with the decisions that we make to make a better Springdale for everyone. We ask that you be with the mayor and his staff, Lord, and with the veterans of our community, as well as those still serving in the armed forces. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Before we get going, Roy, did you -- you had something you wanted to?
I did. I wanted to take just a moment. We had the opportunity this last month to purchase some Thanksgiving dinners and take them around to our local fire halls. And so, we called the chief and asked him, we wanted to do it at two different stations. And he asked us, or he told us that he wanted to do it at number two, which was on Don Tyson, and number seven, which is over at Harbor. And I wanted to take a minute to appreciate Charlie and Elizabeth Adams for helping us with that. I really appreciate you guys coming out and helping us donate to them and spend some time with us and blessing them for the Thanksgiving time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for that recognition. We do appreciate it. I mean, definitely an important part of our community, and it's always good to take care of them on it. So, again, thank you all for joining our Planning Commission meeting for December 3rd, 2019. I'll call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Kerry Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David.
Here.
Vivi Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
And any questions of November minutes?
I have one correction on page 15. It was listed going from A1 to SF1, and it should be A1 to MF2. And Debbie's already made that correction.
Okay.
And then, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see. First item on the agenda. I think we're finally going to hear this. W-19-02 Dakota Riggins, 5233 Stockton Avenue, waiver of sidewalk requirements presented by Darren Riggins.
Actually, it's Dakota. It's not Darren.
We placed a sidewalk bond for the corner of Oak Grove and Stockton, but there is a big drainage ditch there, so it's not actually possible to put a sidewalk in there. So, we're going to see if we can get the bond back.
You got the bond so that you could occupy the house?
Yes. In fact, my couple. Sorry.
Okay. We're going to have to talk to, let engineering address this issue about whether or not a sidewalk could be constructed.
Okay.
Are you ready to address this one?
So, from my observation, there's a sewer manhole, and then, there is a flare-down section for storm water, but it really didn't seem like there was any issue with putting a sidewalk in this spot, in my opinion. If there's a drainage swale, but that can be conveyed underground if necessary. But I really didn't see any issue with putting a sidewalk there as far as the drainage is concerned.
We just didn't want to interfere with the, with filling in that ditch a little bit. And then, we would have to extend a culvert that's underneath the road. And if y'all are okay with that, then we can do that. But we would have to fill in portions of that ditch that is there.
Is that something that if they got with engineering, y'all could work out with details?
I think so. Yeah, I think that you would just have to convey the stormwater underground instead of in an open drainage and then put the sidewalk.
All the way across the lot, or just?
No, no, just underneath the sidewalk.
Any additional comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's see the commission.
So, is that something he could also do payment in lieu of, correct?
Well, he could, that bond could be converted to payment in lieu of, and you still wouldn't have to do the improvements. He's asking you to get the bond money back, saying that he doesn't want to put it, or that to payment in lieu of. And then, when the city takes care of it sometime in the future, that money would be used to do sidewalk improvements, but you don't get it back.
Okay. So, that stays at the full $4,500?
It's whatever the bond, well, it's actual construction costs, and you had to post one and a half times. So, there might be some of it that could be refunded. We'll have to get with engineering and off in the term.
Okay. Will that come back once the construction's done in the future, or will that come back now and do the payment in lieu now?
I would, I would think we would get the money back to, the excess back to you now.
Okay.
That we would, you know, you'd submit an estimate, and we'll get with engineering to see what the actual payment in lieu of would be and whatever excess would be refunded.
Okay.
That money would go into the city's escrow account for future development when the sidewalk is done.
Okay. I think that's fair. I think that's the easiest way.
And the waiver request would be to ask for a refund for the over and above payment in excess.
Okay. So, this would be, is this a motion or a call for? Hmm? Motion?
Foundation, yeah.
This actually doesn't have to go to council if they agree to do the payment in lieu of improvements. We just have to figure out.
So, a motion that he is allowed to do payment in lieu of?
The refund back of anything that's over and above.
Okay.
Part amount. Okay. So, that's your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Get with staff. You might want to give us a call in a couple of days.
Okay.
And see what we can turn over what the actual cost is and what we can do. I'm assuming you submitted a payment?
Yes. We did.
Go back and look it back.
So that they could occupy. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next section, rezoning. And I'm definitely probably going to mess up your last name on here. So, R-19-38 Bayou Presatio and Rafadi Rangriati, 7537 Brooklyn Avenue, from MF3 to SF2, presented by Bayou Presatio.
Yes. So, we purchased the house 7537 in?
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Rafi Rangriati. Our subject property is 7537 Brooklyn Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
We purchased the property in April 2014, but it was only last year it was brought to attention that our house was actually built in non-compliance zone. So, here we are trying to fix that.
Staff comments?
Okay. The current zoning of that lot is included in the others that zone MF3. A single-family home is still allowed in an MF3 zone. It's not a non-compliant zone or anything like that. But if you want to clear it up so it's single-family only for your purposes, rezoning it back to SF?
SF2 is no problem.
The land use plan indicates medium-density residential use for this piece of property. It's keeping with the goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Take it out of the MF3 and put it in the SF2.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's see the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes. Rezoning passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and this will go to City Council. We're anticipating taking these all to council next week.
Okay.
We're assuming council's not going to meet on Christmas Eve.
All right.
So, we're going to try to get everything ready to go to council next Tuesday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next rezoning, 19-39 Elm Springs Center LLC, northwest corner of Elm Springs Road and North 40th, from A1 to C2, presented by Morrison Shipley.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Chairman. Here on behalf of our client, Casey's General Stores, we're seeking rezoning of the tract at the northwest corner of Elm Springs Road and North 40th Street from A1 to C2 to accommodate a new commercial development.
And staff comments? Can, could you state your name for the record?
Doug Melton.
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for this location. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the development, for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional services.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Call for the vote.
Chairman, you have a hand in the crowd. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Can you, if you can come up to the mic and state your name and address, please, just so we have it on the record. Thank you.
I'm Paula Wentz, and I just had a question. I live adjacent to that, and depending upon, my home has been there for 40 years, what they develop and how they develop it, I just want to make sure that consideration has been made of the lay of the land as to whether flooding will occur on adjacent properties.
We will address that with a large-scale development plan that's also on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let's see the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, by Mrs. Haney.
David.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes. Passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it'll go to council next Tuesday night.
Next item, R-19-40 Hilton Road Real Estate LLC, east side of Hilton, approximately .45 miles of Don Tyson Parkway, from SF2 to MF4, presented by ESI.
Daniel Butler with ESI. We're just requesting that we rezone this 39 and 1/2 acre piece from SF2 to MF4. I think it's a good fit in this area. It's just south of the new southeast Springdale Park. You've got the city limits on the east and the south, but I can try to answer any questions if you all have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates slow-density residential for this tract. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Check positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors, and assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. This does border the park on the north side. Where's your?
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name's Ellen Cunningham, and my back fence borders this. Could I get a copy of what she just read? Also, I got the letter said we're going to put this brought up. We've got a neighborhood that every three houses is worth a million dollars, and this says there are going to be duplexes and multifamily. Would you want this next door to your house? And I don't have any idea what the access is going to be, and it is going to come through our neighborhood to get to Butterfield, Stagecoach Road. Otherwise, you're going to 412. There's going to be a tremendous traffic increase coming through our neighborhood to get in and out of this. The west side of that is where the street is, Butterfly, that comes through our neighborhood.
Okay. Right now, the preliminary plat that's in the review stages will show all the access off of Hilton Road.
On what? I can't hear you back here. Your speakers aren't through back here.
Okay. I'll try a little bit. Sorry. The preliminary plat that we are, that is going through review right now shows all the access off of Hilton Road.
Off of Hilton Road? Well, that's where my back fence borders.
You, where, where are you exactly? Your address?
4060. I can point you right to where it is, sir. I can point you right to where it's at.
Right there?
Right there.
You're at 4060, right there? Okay. Okay.
Thank you. And it says multifamily, and only example I've got of multifamily duplexes, Stagecoach, Single Tree, and Commons. Try to drive down that street any time of the day. Alls I can see is my property value, and I searched this in R2 when I bought. I feel I've wasted my money. You know it's not going to increase my property value. And I'm not the only one in my neighborhood that thinks so, but I'm the only one of two that got the letter.
They are only required to notify the properties that actually are adjacent to?
It's going to affect the whole neighborhood, ma'am.
I understand that, but I can tell you, they met the requirements of the ordinance because they only have to notify the adjacent property owners.
And you had asked for the details of what she read. This is actually posted out on the website.
On the city's website.
It's on the what?
It's on the websites of the city.
It's on the website?
Yes, sir.
Does that say how many streets, how many homes, how many dwellings?
Right now, the maximum they can do is eight units per acre. That's the most that they can put on it.
Eight units per acre.
If it gets rezoned to the MF4, eight units per acre is the most that they can do now.
Times 40 acres?
No, this is only, yeah.
Thank you.
39 and 1/2, okay.
Yes, sir. If you'll come up to the mic, please.
Hello, Steve Fedorko. I live at 4048 Butterfly Avenue, which is one house off of Hilton. So, I had a few questions, and in looking at this rezoning, clearly, that land goes through a creek, goes through Clear Creek. So, is, are they going to build on Clear Creek or do anything with that?
Well, they can't build in the floodway itself.
Okay, so?
And there are limitations of what they can do in the floodplain. That is not an, that is not a question that we discuss with the rezoning, but when we get the preliminary plat, we will look at those issues, right?
Okay, so this is, so do we know how many units they're going to put in there?
Well, as I said, the maximum they can put in there is eight units per acre. That's, if the zoning gets approved, that's all they can put in there is eight units.
Based on the creek and all of these kind of things. So, is that plat map available?
They have submitted a preliminary plat that is still going through the review process to address the layout of the streets, the size of the lots, the floodplain issues, the detention issues, the utilities that goes in. It was on the agenda for tonight, but it is tabled to give us a little bit more time to review all those issues before it's submitted for review at the Planning Commission.
Well, yeah, that's, I guess that's my problem. You know, just to rezone it without knowing what's, what it's going to look like seems to be putting the cart before the horse type of thing. So, I mean, it's definitely going to impact traffic on Hilton. I'm not sure how this process goes. I'm relatively new to the area. But I guess without seeing that plat map and knowing exactly how many units they're going to put in there, I don't know what question to ask.
The SF2 zone that's already there allows it to be developed with single-family homes without any layout. Zoning comes in is the highest and best use for that piece of property residential. It is the highest and best use of that piece of property residential at eight units per acre.
Eight?
That's the determination that's being made tonight.
Just whether it could be used as eight per acre?
Right now, it's being used for SF2, which is four units per acre, without any layout of anything. We just, that, that's the way we look at the zoning. Once the zoning has been approved, then the developer comes back with a proposal to show how it's being laid out, how it addresses the city's minimum standards of our street widths and locations and access points and drainage and all that stuff.
I see. I get you. Okay. Trying to think of a coherent question here, based on that information that you just gave me. So, the city codes, what would be the benefit of the multifamily instead of just leaving it at SF2 right now?
Well, the request being made by the property owner is to allow it to have duplexes. Duplexes are not allowed in an SF2 zone. They would have to rezone it to some other multifamily type to be able to put duplexes on it.
Okay, just in general, then, do you look at the impact this rezoning would have on property values around the area or traffic or anything like that, or does that come later?
I can tell you that traffic is something that we look at. You know, Hilton Road is designated on the master street plan as a minor collector designed to handle a larger volume of traffic, knowing that the way these things are laid out in the access, it addresses those issues. The park has created quite a bit of traffic on that street already.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
I guess the other concern is, as my neighbor said, Butterfly would kind of turn into a throughway, I think. It already is. It goes from Hilton to Butterfield Coach. We might experience a lot more traffic on that. I'm also coordinator for our Neighborhood Watch, and we've had the police department give us presentation and talk about that exact situation. So, I pretty much think it's going to have an impact on traffic flow through all of those streets. So, I don't know.
I guess the question I would ask, why would you assume that the people who live in that subdivision would go on a narrower street to get across when they can do Hilton Road up to the roundabout and Don Tyson Parkway and be able to go either direction? I don't know that we could automatically assume that the traffic's going to include a increase in?
It's not an assumption. They do it. We've documented this.
But it's people going to the park. It's not people who live there, correct?
We don't know their intent, but we do know people cut through there going both directions. And I'm not sure where they're going, if they're going to the park or the other neighborhood, Grand Valley or, yeah, subdivision. Just concerned about traffic in, I don't know if I can express this, but I'd be opposed to this. I'd be opposed to it. I don't, I don't see a problem with SF2 because that would be a continuation of the, basically, the current neighbors, neighborhood around there. But to have high density, or, well, you said low to medium density, it's still going to double the amount. So, I'd be opposed to this. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Yes, my name is Gwen Newport. I'm here representing Mary Horn. She owns all the land to the east of this property. She was bombarded last couple of years by the other development that happened on the end of Habberton with all that development was going on. We had crews in there, and now, it's to the point now that we are the catch-all of all the water drainage. We have the creek, Clear Creek, that runs through there now, but now, at that bottom corner of Don Tyson's and Habberton, we now sit in water. It is really bad because of the flow coming from the housing area up above, that they did the, the whole development there. So, they're afraid that this may happen back coming the other direction now on them. And they're, you know, they want to protect what they have there. They have, they've donated land for the park years ago. We have a nice park there. And, you know, we want to make sure that they're protected and that all this water drainage is not going to end up on their land. They've been farming this land, running cattle and horses on it for many years. Now, we're selling, they're selling all that, the cattle and horses off so that we no longer have that because we have so much water problem going on that has flowed down through the whole process of this. Plus, they, you know, it's right up against their property. They want to know if there's going to be a survey, privacy fences. They want to know, you know, how many units are going to be there. And, you know, they're just concerned because that's on the backside of their property. They don't want their property to deface in any mean shape, form, or whatsoever. And just like the other gentleman was talking about, he's a large landowner too. He, you know, my, this property does connect in with this whole development, and there is concerns here. I think it still should be left as the zoning as it is for future references. I don't believe that it needs to be a multifamily because of all the development. You're going to have, you've got Clear Creek running right through the property. I think it better be well thought out before they do anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let's see the commission.
I have a question. So, the land use plan says low, low density. What would we classify MF4?
MF4 is low to medium.
Low to medium?
Well, it's medium density because it's eight units. Yeah. SF2 is low to medium because it's?
My only question.
Betsy, are we aware of any future road improvements through there that's going to widen the road to be able to take any more traffic through there?
I do not know of anything that's being considered as part of the current bond program. The road was improved with, you know, the park. This developer would be required to do his half of the street, the full width of his piece of property as part of that development. So, you got a little, little section in there that I don't know if it's widened out or not. The south part, the subdivision that's on the west side, they did their part of the street improvements on that.
Any other questions or comments?
Am I able to say something?
Yeah.
Due to the floodplain that's going along the north side of that property, even though that we rezone this, if it was to rezone it with eight units per acre, there's no way you're going to be able to get to the eight units per acre due to that floodplain. There's a big nine acres with the plat that we're proposing that would be a POA, and so, the actual units per acre is going to be a whole lot less. I just wanted to add that.
Does have a significant drainage area across through there. It really does.
But it's, so it would still be higher than SF2? What SF2 allows?
Higher than four units per acre. Would be higher than four units per acre, even taking that out. That's why they're, well, you're coming in with MF4 because you wanted to do duplexes. What is the proposed density on that MF4?
So, if you count the pond and the POA, it's 3.97. So, it's actually less than four, but you can't do?
You can't do duplexes unless you get to it. Lots require a 10,000 square foot lot for each duplex with 80-foot of drainage on a public street. Now, am I in the right way?
So, you're basically saying over 20% of the area is, is not feasible to develop?
Right.
Because of floodplain and because of the creek area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I mean, it's a significant percentage of the overall piece of it.
And with that significant of a piece coming out, I mean, the higher density, the ability to use that property? It's going to be harder to go in a single-family neighborhood.
And the streets that would go through, it would take up, what, another 5%?
Yeah.
Looking 25, 28% of the developments, that's not, and a whole piece on it. Okay.
Just so the folks that live over here know, can you, can you explain when this gets developed, what has to happen to the road there and, and the improvements that have to be made?
If the rezoning is, is approved, they have to submit a preliminary plat for a subdivision[1639.57] for that, which will address the layout of all the streets, the improvements to the existing street, how the utilities are going to be put in there, what areas are going to be set aside for detention, along that, because they're required to have detention, and then they're setting aside, proposing to put some area for a POA, though it would be open space that really connects to the city's park. There is additional open space, but it would be owned and maintained by the POA of this subdivision.
And that plat would come back before this body, and it would be made public?
And it was on the agenda for tonight, but we pulled it off for tonight, we tabled it tonight, because we, we still have a couple of issues we need to address before we feel comfortable making sure that you guys get to see it, so.
I just want to make sure that the folks that are here know that they will get a chance to see that when it's, when it's voted on, before it's voted on.
And to let you know, to see that the entire packet that is sent out to the planning commission members with all the exhibits and all the drawings is on the city's website before each planning commission meeting. If you go to the city's website, and you go to the meetings and agendas, you'll see a packet in there that has all that information in there for you to look at.
Does this be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
A rezoning passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and anticipate to go to council next Tuesday night.
And as it was stated, as far as the preliminary plat for this, that's been tabled, and so I suspect that'll be heard in January.
It'll be at the front of the meeting at the next, assuming we get all the issues worked out, and we have confidence that I'll be taking care of.
So for those of you that did come in for this, if you're not an adjacent property owner, as far as any notification on that, you can actually see the details on the, on the website. And all the detailed packet, the same thing that we get here, you'll have access to that. And so I suspect a lot of your questions that you've had, as far as drainage and things of that nature, that is the intent, as far as these plats are concerned on here.
And you can come by the office, and we'll sit down and answer questions with you if you have questions. The January planning commission meeting is January the 7th, and it'll be at 5 o'clock right here at this location.
All right. Thank you. All right, next section is conditional use. We have conditional use, C19-23, Marcus Goodwin, 321 Cottle Avenue, Use Unit 28, Home Occupation and MF12, by, presented by Marcus Goodwin.
I'm Marcus Goodwin, 321 Cottle Avenue, here seeking the conditional use.
As you all remember, last, last meeting, you made the determination that this could be a home occupation, because he repairs clocks, okay?
Yes.
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, the off-street parking is acceptable, refuges and service areas is acceptable, utilities are acceptable, no screening requirements, you can't have a sign for a home occupation, the yard requirements are acceptable, the landscaping is not applicable to this. It is generally compatible with the following conditions. No alteration of the outside appearance of the residential structure, provision of a separate outside entrance for the business areas of the residential structure, new outside storage and materials required for the operation of the business, operated only by the resident members of the household, and shall not have any employees, concessionaires, or any other form of, or, of operator or helper, whether such business is conducted on the premises or off the premises. Requires the use of an area no greater than 30% of the total heated living space of the residential structure. Generates no traffic, parking, and sewage or water use in excess of what is normal in the residential neighborhood. Will not produce any fumes, odors, noise, or any other offensive effects that are not normal to residential activity. Will not involve accessory buildings. Stock and trade shall not exceed 10% of the floor area of the accessory used. Will not require the construction of a duplicate kitchen or the addition to the existing kitchen. Will not require or cause the consumption on the premises of any food product, and will not provide medical treatment, therapeutic massage, or similar activities.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Mission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
All right.
Staff will prepare, the resolution goes to council next Tuesday.
Will I need to be there?
Meeting is at 6 o'clock here. I'll make the presentation, we recommend you be here in case there are...
Next conditional use, C19-24, Haley Graham, 5544 Peyton Place, Use Unit 28, Home Occupation and an SF2, presented by Haley Graham.
Hi, I'm Haley Graham, my address is 5544 Peyton Place, and I would like a conditional use license.
And for a home occupation, you'll be doing what kind of work?
Embroidery.
Following recommendation, the ingress and egress is acceptable, the off-street parking is acceptable, the refuge area is acceptable, utilities is acceptable, screening's not really required, no sign is allowed, acceptable yard and size and shape, proposed landscaping is not acceptable, not applicable, I'm sorry, no, it doesn't mean acceptable. General compatibility with the following conditions, and they're same ones I just read for the last one, and I'll read them again if you want me to, but it's exact same ones.
No. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
You don't have any Black Friday sales with like thousands of people? Okay, good, all right.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Conditional use passes 8-0.
Staff will prepare, the resolution goes to council next Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next section, preliminary plats, 18-07, Spring Creek Farms, Revised Miller Road, presented by CEI.
Nate Bachelor from CEI here. You may, you may recall this preliminary plat submitted a year or more ago, that development ultimately fell through. The Signature Bank is currently the landowner, and has advertised the property for sale, and Mr. Pinkley has, has come in and desires to develop remarkably the same layout that was prepared, prepared a year, year or more ago. 126 platted lots, 124 buildable, in two phases of construction, what you see here today. Future phases may be extended further to the east. Property in total is about 120 acres.
Staff comments?
Okay, the phase line is what we see on, across that drawing right there.
No.
You have a phase line?
Next drawing, please. The boulder outline in, on the south, those, those lots on the south side would be the second phase of construction. Asking for approval of the first two phases here.
I don't think we have any outstanding comments that were not as part of the previous one, where of those?
Working through the last remaining comments with engineering, and springing that water as well, so.
As long as you address the utility companies that...
Independently.
Is that it? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
I have a motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second by Mr. Peters.
I went blank. It's been a long day, so. It threw me off, as far as this. Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker.
Thank you.
Passes 8-0, thank you.
When you're used to hearing certain names all the time? Sorry, Ben. Or should I call you Mr. Ben with... All right, the next section, large-scale developments, L19-22, AMS Development, 3497 Wagon Wheel Roads, presented by Harrison French.
Sorry, I thought it was next. We're proposing an expansion to the...
Can you raise that mic up a little more?
To the existing advanced monitoring services building, with associated parking and drainage, landscaping, et cetera. If you have any questions, I'm right here.
Staff comments?
Maybe needs your, your name too, sir.
Yeah.
Sorry, Evan Niehaus with Harrison French.
Comments we have left is, one landscaping comment is, provide a minimum of one tree per 25 linear feet along the perimeter lot lines. Variants will be required for deviation, and you haven't applied for any variances. Are you intending to add more landscaping, or are you going to come back and...
We submitted a couple of letters, but I guess we needed to reformat those into the actual format correctly.
Okay. Sidewalks no less than five feet in width should be provided along the full length of the building. Facade featuring a customer entrance along any facade abutting public parking areas. You didn't apply for a variance for that one either. And the predominant building materials, are you, still have a lot of metal on this building?
We submitted variances letters, but we did not correctly format them, and so...
So you're going to come back and submit variances for that?
We will be back on January, yes.
So we need to talk about the variances, and let the planning commission give you some feedback, the elevations that were presented. Engineering-wise, street light is required?
I think we proposed, well, go ahead.
Did you propose a street light?
So, I believe, is, is there an existing street light?
There's an existing street light, a little bit down, one of the side streets, but not on the corner.
Those, those are not public streets, those are private, private streets, so that doesn't count. You need a, a street light along wagon wheel.
We did propose some. Maybe they might not be called out on the landscape plan, but I believe...
Well, are they called out on the site plan? Katie, you need to go back and look and see if you can find it, because that still needs to be addressed, okay?
We'll just have to, we'll figure that out.
That comment still needs to be addressed, and you have variances that you need to address. Drainage-wise, they're proposing detention...
So can I ask a quick question? Why are we considering this large scale before all these variances are put in?
Well, they either have to meet it, or come back and ask for a variance. We've done it before.
What they, what they did, if I may, they, they did it in a letter format, which is something that we, you know, so, we had to let them know that they have to do the proper form to fill out.
This does have detention on the south side, right?
That's correct.
Katie, there's no issues with the detention?
No, the drainage is fine.
Now, let's go back to the building elevations. Okay, along the front, the existing building is what you see on the right-hand portion of the picture at the top?
That's correct.
And your, that higher piece there is the, kind of the walkway between the two buildings that's shown on the site plan?
That's correct.
Then all the rest of that is new?
From the AMS portion there, they put, they, the add-on on the top, like, I guess, cantilevered portion, and then they're adding on from that point to your left.
So the left side, the left facade elevation is the west side of the building?
The existing is on the west, yes.
So that would be the east side?
Yes.
And the back of the building will have...
The back of the building is the one, sorry, I was a little loud, second from the bottom.
And it has a roll-up door and two...
And then an existing or a new one in the...
All that's metal with no other breaks? What's the length of that wall?
I would have to double-check. I'm not sure.
More than 100 feet, it has to have breaks. Okay, those are my comments.
So, really, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to... What we were looking at, or what the architect was trying to accomplish with that, is, the existing metal building is obviously not the greatest-looking building, so they, they did dress it up a little bit with some of the add-ons at the top, and the cantilevered portion, and we didn't want it to look just completely awkward, adding some totally different, just having like two different buildings there. So they tried to add some, a little bit nicer metal on this portion, with some wood bumpouts and some other architectural features.
By nicer metal, what do you mean?
I would have to look. In, in the letter, it addressed some of those, those items, and when we produce the correct formatting for the variance, we will definitely make sure that is brought up.
Okay, well, that, that's a little bit different than just the variance for sidewalk and...
Yes, that is, that is a separate variance.
Well, and on the west side of that building, it's probably going to have to be a significant amount of fill that's put in, in order to bring that up in, in level of elevation and stuff like that, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know that I see all the details within that space.
The grading plan is, is in there. We have basically just expanded on to the east, as we said, and it's at the same finished floor elevation. I guess you, it's not particularly clear, obviously, on these slides, but there is a grading plan in your packet, and...
No, I understand there's a grading plan, but is there going to be, what type of landscaping on, on the west side, those types of things there?
Look at the landscape plan itself.
We have a considerable amount of, I mean, the, the west side is kind of how it is. It's built, there's the existing building, they have a bunch of existing drives, it was done in the county, and so, yes, on the west side, there's concrete, but we have planted all the way around the whole property, like, I don't know if we could squeeze in another tree if we had to.
Those concrete spaces on the west side of the building that are currently used for parking, you not taking out any of that?
We are not touching anything along that street.
So it still will be pulling parking off that part of the drive, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So can we go back to the, to the elevation drawing for just a moment? Are we, are we comfortable with, and forgive me, I'm not sure that this gentleman had the information that you were asking for, whenever you were asking for the distance of the wall, and how many breaks there were within that distance. Are we comfortable that what we're seeing is actually meeting city code? Because I did not hear from this gentleman, he felt comfortable, he knew the distances, or that what was going against that wall was meeting those distances. And that may be just a point of confusion on my part, I'm just looking for clarification.
I don't think it meets the city's design standards, and they're going to have to ask for variances in order for it, if that's what they want it to look like. Because we're talking about materials, breaks, sidewalk itself. I don't know what percentage of the building, can you tell us, is still metal? Do you know?
I can grab the letter and look at it.
I don't think we have the letter.
For what it's worth, I'll just say, two things, even though I know we're not, we're not taking this up tonight, I guess, the variance request, but for, I have seen several metal buildings come through this commission that don't look that nice, in my opinion. And I also think we have to keep in mind that they're taking an existing building, whatever's there, and trying to make it nicer than what's there. They're not building from scratch, which I feel like is a higher bar, but, you know, I, that's just my opinion. I've, I've, I've seen several come through that have plenty of metal, no, you know, wood-type facade, that, that weren't, that weren't as nice as that. I don't, there's nothing on here, to me personally, that just strikes me as, as...
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a building just right down the road that we approved and is developed and done, that, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that metal either.
Yeah.
My bigger concern on this is there's just a lot of, a significant amount of variances. You know, it is a large-scale development, I don't feel comfortable as far as an overall large-scale development, and there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, I applaud you, I think you've done a great job as far as the front of this, and it's obvious that the money's being spent on the front, not the back, which is where you're going to run into the issues as far as breaks. I applaud you as far as the landscaping pieces of that, however, I don't know that all the elevations and how that's going to be addressed. I get it for the building itself, but I'm more concerned as far as the look, because I drive by that every single day, and, and that whole piece, and, I mean, it is good to see something new, but if we're going to put something in there, let's do it right, and...
No, we totally agree, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. There are some percentages I have in here that pertain to...
You want to tell us what they are?
Yes. I'll just read this directly. Our proposed design reduces prefabricated steel panel percentages as follows. The front facade is minus 46.3%, the right facade being the new addition, I believe, is 63.7%. The back facade is 80.5%, and the left facade is 94.9%.
Okay. Any other questions?
What is the allowable?
The term is predominant.
80-plus percent's pretty predominant.
But it doesn't say, the side, it's the entire...
Have to be careful with that. Think we've let some in cases where they've had a much higher quality of slightly, you know, more architectural look to it.
The term is just predominant.
Dominant exterior building materials, not per side, or... Give them the percentages again?
We will, I guess, it'll be included in your packet next time, but I'll read them off again. Front facade, 46.3%, right facade, 63.7%, back facade, 80.5%, the left facade, 94.9%.
You're saying that predominant exterior material is...
Well, if, the left facade is the existing... Well, if, the left facade is the existing building, well, I take that back.
And it's metal panels?
It is metal panels.
The front, the preceding, it, what material is that?
Front facade is called out at forty-six point three.
Of what? What's the material that's forty-six point three percent?
I believe it's prefabricated steel.
Because the, the design standards say predominant exterior materials as well as accidents should be compatible with the surrounding area, not include the following: smooth-faced concrete block, tilt-up concrete panels, and prefabricated. Now, you have to remember when this was written. We may not have had the quality of fabricated steel panels at that time. No, we have seen some that are used in other structures. Be asking for the predominant material to be prefabricated steel panels, that portion of it too. What's the rest? You said there's wood panels, and I assume that's?
The, the brown is the wood panels, and then the, the other percentages would be the glass.
And that light colored on the front, is that, what kind of material is that? Is that metal panels, or is that stucco or something like that?
The light, light? I believe that's, those are windows.
Top, you've got the dark, and that next section over is kind of a? What, what is that material?
I'm not sure. I didn't design it.
Okay, so you don't have that stucco?
But somewhere in here is, is, this is probably what calls out, this is what calls out the materials, and this chart here, I believe, calls out the percentages of each material.
There's gray metal siding.
What are the questions?
I'd still like to take this and the variances all up at the same time, so, big picture of what's going on. It's not ugly. I, I, I like the way it looks, but I really don't know how much variance I'm granting by approving this, so, gotta come back for variances anyway. Guess that you table this and come back next month, and we can look at the whole picture and give you an answer.
That's fair.
Light metal panels?
Okay.
The dark color is wood, light metal panels, it's not wood, but? Gonna request this to be tabled till next month, and you'll?
Yes, ma'am. What is the date for the variances, if you don't mind me asking now?
Uh, either twelfth?
And?
Yeah, they have to be in by the eighteenth.
Eighteenth of this month.
I would like to also ask, and I certainly understand you guys look at a ton of buildings, so, I understand you not knowing the answer to every single question, but I would ask that someone, whoever it is representing this, be more familiar with what the building's being made up, what different products are being on the front sides, east, west, whatever. Just because it helps us, if you think you don't know it, imagine us. We, this is the first time, you know, we may be looking at, so, anything you can do to help us with that would be really great. Thank you.
And, you know, and, and things like, if you're deviating from the landscaping, are you gonna take that foundation? I mean, are, are you gonna, is it landscaping as well?
We kept all the landscaping that was required, and we put it elsewhere on the site.
Show us the numbers of how many you were required to do and where you're putting all the rest of it.
Yeah, just the apples-to-apples comparison of how far off you are from where?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I definitely think it's an improvement. I agree with the rest of what the comments are. I'd just rather see everything out so we can look at it and, you know, frank about what we're, you know, so we can clearly see exactly what it is that you want.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll hear it next month, and you have the eighteenth as far as the deadline to get to the variances in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Don't wait till the last day.
And I would advise not having a laundry list of variances on this here, so, just saying on that one. Next large scale, nineteen dash twenty-three Casey's General Store, northwest corner of Elm Springs Road and North Fortieth Streets. Also have a variance for deviation of second entrance requirements. Deviation more than sixty percent of parking in front, deviation of foundation landscaping presented by Morrison Shipley.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Doug Melton with Morrison Shipley Firm on behalf of our client, Casey's General Store, proposing to build a new convenience store and restaurant at that northwest corner of Fortieth and Elm Springs. It'll be approximately fifty-three hundred square feet. Uh, we've just requested the rezoning from A1 to C2. It's a one-point-four-six acre tract. We'll have a fuel canopy with twenty, uh, twenty-eight, uh, bays in there for, for automobiles. Propose to connect to a mutual access to the west that will tie to the, uh, what was the, the donut shop, which is now, I believe, a taco shop. And then we've also agreed to build out a driveway to come to the rear of the Whataburger and the Taco Store and provide, uh, access back to the backside of those stores. We'll have access off of, uh, Fortieth at the northeast corner of our property, and then we'll have a, uh, frontage access on Elm Springs at the southwest corner of the property. Uh, I have visited with the lady and explained to her the drainage. We'll have an earthen soil on the backside of the store, carry the drainage back around to the front. Everything will be graded to the front. We'll pick up with curb and gutters, and we'll have underground detention at the southeast corner of the site. We've, uh, requesting variances, are we, do I need to speak to those right now? Okay, uh, requested the variances as to landscaping. Uh, the foundation landscaping is not really all that great with a, a convenience store. We need to have sidewalks that come up to the front of the building for sanitation purposes. There'll be ice vending machines out there, and so, in, in lieu of that, we have, uh, added landscaping to the front and to the side, to the east side of the property, in consideration for, uh, asking for the variance on that foundation. Um, I believe the parking, of course, is, for reasons of security and traffic flow and to be considerate of the neighbors, we like to keep that out in front so that the, the store management and personnel can see what's going on out there. Having it in the back's a, a real security concern. And I believe that it's kind of the basics of the elements. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And because it's on a corner lot, you would be required to have two primary access points, and you're limiting to one? Even though you have a door shown on the east side of the building, that's, uh, emergency exit only?
That's correct.
They actually only have one principal, uh, access to it if there are some.
The stores are never heavily staffed, so there's always a security concern to try to be able to see who's coming and going, and having those, uh, if you have a big staff, having a second entrance is a possibility, but generally, these don't have a big enough staff to, to make it secure.
And this is standard, pretty much the standard elevation to the Casey's stores that you see?
That's correct. I believe you all have seen the one over on Sunset.
Let's go back to, uh, Austin, can you go back to that dumpster location? You have screening on the north side of that, which is to the property of the other side. You don't have any landscaping on the south side? It's your intention to come before employees come directly out of that store on that concrete and go around into that and not?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I can barely hear. There's so much roar from the air handler, I can barely hear.
That's, that's what we have in here, is a good air system, okay. The dumpster location, you have landscaping on the north side.
That's correct.
Adjacent to that, but you don't have any on the, on the south side because it's concrete adjacent to it, which provides a concrete access point for people to come out from the store to take the trash into the dumpsters, is what you're proposing?
That's correct, yes.
And it's all gonna be concrete? There's not going to be any grass areas around it or anything?
No, we'll bring the, the sidewalk around where they can walk out and access the dumpster. You're correct.
And it is a brick screening around the dumpster?
Yes.
Underground detention, is that area on the?
Southeast corner of the lot.
Southeast corner where you see those, that area, uh, similar to what the adjacent properties has done with, uh, underground detention?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I don't have anything else.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
A question, Mr. Chairman, on this, in your segress point here, is, what is the distance from here to this intersection?
Tell us the distance from there to the, it meets the minimum requirement.
It beats the minimum requirements, and I brought half scales, and I'm an old man, and I didn't bring my glasses with me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, the, the reason for the question?
We, we met the minimum separation from the intersection. That's correct.
That's fine. The reason for the question is, I didn't know if we needed that to be a right-in or right-out, if we feel comfortable that people can take a left out of there without causing concern getting prior to the light and getting into a queue.
There's some times of the day you can, most of the times you can't. But it does meet the distance from the, from the street to that. I mean, that's the only place they've got to put one.
And having the access on, on Fortieth, and then having the cross-access behind and in front of the, the restaurants, I think, it shouldn't be any issue.
And it kind of helps that whole area move because you can come across through there and get out to Fortieth Street to the lot. They were asked to, to add that access on the north side, and, you know, they were willing to do that so you can get across through there.
It's probably similar to the competitor on the other side of the road as far as the distance to that.
Yeah, it's, it's, I have no issue with it. I love, I love the, the builder. I mean, they do a great job here in Springdale. Um, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have a concern of, of queuing up into that left lane, because with, obviously with the school so close and the traffic going back and forth, I didn't want somebody flying out there trying to make a delight to get in this left lane and cause an accident coming out there, particularly since they already have so many other access points around.
We're probably not gonna keep somebody from flying out of there and trying to do the best we can with, as far as ways we could.
Can you come up to the microphone, ma'am?
Roy, can you show her where the access drive is on the, it, it doesn't, it doesn't come onto your property? It's far enough south from your property that all of the radiuses is on their own property?
Come around the east side of the building.
There again, that's as close as it can get to the property line and as close as it can get to the intersection.
So, those entrances, the next, um, what's the largest size vehicle that can handle? What's the largest size of, as, uh, 'cause you're, you're gonna deal with, uh, local deliveries and things like that, but if a semi came through there with a fifty-three foot trailer?
You know, we're anticipating, we modeled that they'll come in off of Elm Springs, the transport, they'll be able to accommodate the transport. We make turning movement models. They'll be able to unload. The fuel tanks are on the west side of the building there, and so, the, the delivery trucks for dry goods will come in the same way I would anticipate.
So, your fuel truck comes in and then goes out behind the taco, or comes in behind the taco and goes out the other way?
You know, it depends on what they, those guys wanna do. They're amazing how they can come in and out of some of these places.
Well, I agree, I'm just talking about the turning radius up at the top behind the King Burrito.
The modeling we made, it will come in off of Elm Springs, and they'll come out on the backside behind the restaurants.
So, do you have the turning radius for a tractor-trailer at the back behind the King Burrito?
Yes.
That was my question. I think that's the only, you're probably looking at a tanker, it's gonna be the largest, but?
You know, and, and it's, it's not unheard of for those guys to pull in and, and do a, a back end in front of the store and come back out.
No overnight parking for any semis allowed on the lot?
No, sir, it's correct.
Oh, just, I just wanted to ask, so?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Starting with the variance?
Yes.
Call for the vote on the variance.
Take them all at once?
All, all together.
Call for votes on the variances by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Variance is past eight-zero. Have a motion on, uh, large scale?
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero. Thank you very much. Next large scale, nineteen dash twenty-five Springdale Fire Department, east of Bain and north side of Turnbo Avenue, presented by ESI.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jay Strain. I'm with Engineering Services. Uh, project I'm presenting tonight is a, a training facility for the City of Springdale Fire Department. Um, it is located on, uh, the north side of Turnbo Avenue, um, east of Bain. Um, it, it is a, an expansion of a, a, a previous development, uh, back from twenty-seventeen. Basically, this project is adding a thirteen thousand square foot, uh, building, associated parking, a, a new parking lot in the front, uh, on, on the south side of the building. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Staff comments?
The elevations that were included in your packet, the flat ones are really hard to understand. I have some explanation. When you see the 3D model like that, it really makes a whole lot more sense than what the other one made. All right, so that's the facility that they're looking at. You can see it has some breaks in the front, it has some area that is adjacent to the creek, has some breaks, it has a patio area in the back, uh, screening of the equipment, uh, deviations in the roof, which I thought was really hard to see on the other drawings. Uh, I believe, uh, Katie, the drainage is okay on this one, too?
We'll have a little work to do. They're not proposing detention, that I've seen, so, they've just, the last plans I saw, they were wanting to drain straight to the creek.
Is that not detention at the?
No, that's a berm, because the trail is right, I mean, the creek is right there on the other side. Um, yeah, it looks like a pond. Um, so, yeah, we'll just need to work on the detention, and then it will be fine.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
I don't have any questions on this one, but I do wanna put in a plug for the Springdale Fire Department, as I'm sure Dr. Compton would support. If you have not had the chance to go through any of your local fire stations, I encourage you, take a few minutes, go by. They would love to meet you and take you through it at any time. Uh, and if you don't, haven't had a chance to go through some of the new ones, uh, we are very fortunate in this city to have a fantastic fire department, uh, tremendous people that staff it, and we're very blessed to have the equipment we have, so, I just encourage the citizens to go out and do that if they have the opportunity.
Is this a facility that would just be used by Springdale, or do we, is, do we offer this up to other cities as well?
This is just for the City of Springdale, uh, as far as I, I, I can tell. I'm not sure.
Got a chief back there, I bet they can answer that question.
This'll end up being a regional training facility, just like we use Rogers and Fayetteville currently. We'll just share that option with all those other departments as well.
Thank you. So, the deten, I, I, I'm not sure I was understanding that correctly. Will there be a detention, or?
We, we are not showing, uh, a detention pond currently, um, but, but we, uh, we will certainly work with engineering staff to satisfy any, any, any requirements they have. As I mentioned previously, uh, you know, there's a, the, there's an existing building on the lot right now that was built in, uh, twenty-seventeen. And at that time, there was not any detention required, um, so, it is a little, um, we're not showing detention right, uh, as, as of now, 'cause there's, you know, really, we would have put the detention on where that existing building is, uh, 'cause that's where the, this lot drains to, but, uh, but like I said, we, we'll work with, uh, with, with the engineering staff and, and, uh, and make sure they're, they're satisfied.
So, they're just required to match the peak flow of before the development, um, so, any water leaving the site now, they can't add to that. Um, so, they just have to mitigate that stormwater increase. Doesn't necessarily have to be a detention pond, like we've seen underground detention and other kinds of things. Um, so, we'll, we'll just have to find a way to make sure that the water is slowed before it reaches the creek. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions, be a motion?
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peters.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight-zero. Thank you. Next section, Board of Adjustments, B nineteen dash fifty-two, Bob Bonds, eighty-three thirty-two East Wagon Wheel Road, variance for deviation of bulk square footage. And also waiver of sidewalk requirements, so, presented by Bob Bonds.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and chairman. I'm Bob Bonds from Fayetteville, Centerwood Road in Fayetteville. This request is for a variance of deviation of bulk square footage in RE zone. Uh, requires one acre per residence, and, uh, I have what is considered, a residence is a shop, garage, RV storage building. It does have a bathroom. It does have a bathroom and a kitchen in it, so it qualifies as a residence. So I need a variance to, to allow that, plus a park model home that we'll be moving up there and a house that my son plans to build in the future.
Staff comments?
I have any comments? I think originally we thought the RV was just going to be, was going to be a shop with an RV storage in it, but by fire code, I think it's fire code, once you put that bathroom and that kitchen facility, it has to be considered a residential structure. That's why we're here.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. Be a call for a vote on the variance.
So how big is that piece of property?
3.76 acres.
Just a little bit short for the three.
And actually the additional structure is not enough to, to cause a problem for it. It just happens to be classified as a residential use because somebody could.
Okay. Call for the vote.
All right. Call for vote on the variance by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero. And the waiver for sidewalk requirement? Be a motion?
So that's not, that piece of property is not being subdivided in any way.
No.
It'll all remain one track. It will just have more than one principal use on it and, uh, it'll be sold that way as it is sold.
Motion subject staff comments? Question by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney?
Yeah, wait, wait, wait. We're doing the waiver of sidewalk requirements. Are we recommended to council to, to grant the waiver? That's what you're?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we are.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Waiver passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Last item, B 19 dash 54, Terry Wood, Office Building, Northwest Intersection of Don Tyson Parkway and I-49, variance for deviation of perimeter landscaping, presented by Crafton Toll. I was 13 minutes over what I said it would be.
Yes, you were. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Barry Williams with Crafton Toll, the landscape architect for the project.
I think we can announce who the occupant of this building is now?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I've heard.
Cross and Blue Shield. Uh, the, the large scale that you looked at last week shows landscaping that addresses all of the perimeter is being put in other places on, on the site itself. We just didn't actually get the variance on the agenda, so that's basically what they're asking for.
Yes, ma'am. We were really in the process of design and flux, uh, to a certain extent, and this variance is for the western boundary. There you can see we do get within the seven foot buffer zone. However, a law so along the western border, we have places where the buffer is going to be 30 and 40 feet. And, uh, with the kind of organic nature that we decided to go with, with this particular project, we ended up with some 30,000 square feet of internal green space that actually the way the landscape ordinance is written requires trees per so many square feet. So we're gonna, the, the plant schedule on another page would illustrate to you the numbers on the trees and things of that nature that we want to require, or that we are putting back. The trail on that western border is around, is 10 feet wide. I think it encroaches two to three feet in a couple of places. The reason for the width of the trail is because, uh, we needed to keep it close to the parking lot in order to get grade transitions down to the property lines. We also wanted to consider that this trail could be used during the day and actually be comfortable for two people to be able to walk side by side should there be a car parked there overhanging the trail slightly by two feet or so. And, uh, so, and the trail connects out to the west and we're going to work through sidewalk issues out to Don Tyson, uh, things of that nature. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any comments? All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
I have a call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero.
Thank you very much for your time, Seb.
Thank you. Appreciate your.
You take care.
Planning director report?
Um, as you all remember, I told you last week Aaron has left. Uh, Austin has been promoted to the assistant director position. Uh, we are currently in the process of looking for a senior planner to fill, fill his position. We've got, it's been advertised. We don't have any interviews set up. We hope to do that very, very soon. Kind of busy. Lot of stuff going on.
Congratulations, Austin.
Um, council action taken in November. The new, uh, water sewer rates were adopted. The final plat for the summer view subdivision was approved. Uh, the council overturned the denial of the rezoning from O1 to C2 for Black Bear Holding on Turner Street. So the ordinance was presented to the council on the 10th and the, um, council overturned the denial of the manufactured home in the A1 zone up on, uh, North Island Road with the condition that a permanent ingress egress be established. That has to be submitted to the city attorney for approval prior to permitting of the structure on the site. Uh, as of this morning, we still haven't seen anything, so I don't. All the zonings that were recommended were approved, which was the A1 to SF1 for five acres on Powell Street, um, 1.1 acre on Emma Avenue at the southwest corner of McCullough, southeast corner of McCullough Drive from A1 to MF2. And the, um, split of that track on Robinson with part of it being C2, 1.3 acres being C2 and 2.2 acres being C5, that was approved. Uh, additional use for the tenement lot split on Combs Avenue was approved and the conditional use for the automobile sales on Backus Street was also approved. Uh, we discussed at the last planning commission meeting, there would not be a work session in December.
Here's your answer.
Not a work session in December unless you guys are just anxious to have a work session. Um, December usually fills in pretty fast. Um, the, uh, discussion about not having a Christmas party, but having one after the first of the year, we've tentatively set a date for January the 15th at six o'clock at Outback, if that works for everybody. Uh, Debbie has reserved that facility, same place we've gone the last couple of years. We'll have the room in the back. So that's Wednesday, Jan, January 15th at six o'clock. That's all I have.
Anything else you guys have?
I have a comment. I have a, I just have a brief comment about the large scale development plans and how they, I think, just based on what I heard tonight, I think we, this body needs to give some guidance to staff as to what we want not to show up in front of us and what we do. Um, and I say that because they spend all month getting these things ready to prepare, uh, to present to us, um, using their good judgment to say, there are some minor landscaping issues, there might be some, you know, there might be a few variance requests, only to then it get here and us then strongly encourage the applicant to table it. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair to staff. I don't think that's really good customer service for the developers in this city to get all the way to the meeting and then be encouraged to table something when staff feels like it's something that can be resolved after the fact. Much like what we've got up on the screen right now, that large, you know, that large scale development was approved after the fact, they came back and realized they needed to request a variance and followed that process. So I think we need to give Patsy and her team some guidance about.
But Peyton, what does that look like in there? I don't know what other guidance to give in the fact that when you have a large scale development that comes before you, I mean, we heard, I heard of at least about five different variances is probably going to come before us as far as that other one on there. That's excessive in, in my opinion, in that whole piece on it. My recommendation to the planning department is make sure you cover with them as far as you're presenting a large scale, do you have any variances? What format are, did, are you submitting it? If it's not in the right format, there needs to be recommendations to the, the applicant that there's probably going to be some strong, um, opinions or expectations that it's really hard for us to be able to hear things. I get one variance on that one and especially when you're dealing with something like as far as the landscaping of, and a development like this that came through last time, um, it makes sense. There are some of these others that, I don't know what other guidance to give.
But that's why I'm saying there's ambiguity.
Let me comment on this to start with. A variance has to be approved by this body. Staff can't do that.
Exactly.
Okay. I do not have the authority to say you can't apply for a variance.
Exactly.
I can recommend, I can encourage, I can discuss it with them, but if they want to apply for one, I really don't have a way to keep them from doing that.
And that's not what we're saying in here, but I, I do believe that it is the planning department's responsibility to educate as much as possible.
Okay. And trust me, we do that a lot and sometimes they just want to go ahead and, they, they still want to be on the planning commission agenda to hear it from you guys rather than from us telling them.
So, so what you're saying is that you may have recommended that they don't bring it to us yet, but they said they wanted to bring it to us anyway.
Major issues, we'll pull it off the agenda because we know it just can't go forward because we're not comfortable with it.
But at what point in time did that get submitted in the wrong format? And it sounds like they submitted.
Well, it's, it's too late after that to get on the agenda for this time. They were encouraged not to go ahead and bring it, but there again.
And that's not even, that's not even the point. That's, I'm sorry, if I'm, that's not the point I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make is that there's ambiguity between what you're saying, one or five. Well, I think we need to say it's either, if you have five variants, I don't think we're equipped to look at elevations and on the spot say that they require a variance request because I'm looking at the fire department building, there's a lot of metal on that building. Now, I'm not in the, certainly don't have the knowledge to say right now whether that's going to require variance or not. I think we just need to say, at what point do we want Patsy and her team to say, this cannot go forward to planning commission and at what point do we allow it? Is it, you know, you, you know, when we talk about it, it becomes clear. Is it landscaping? Is it design standards? Is it whatever? I think we just need to give them that information about we, what we want to see when it gets here so that they can stop it and shift and put their time and effort towards other, you know, other things that might, you know, need to come before this body. I just hate to see things get all the way onto the agenda and then we recommend them to table, because there's a lot of time that's gone into it getting here.
Well, and.
I think would it, I just think it would help, especially at a time when we're down an FTE to say, um, you know.
Okay, I'll go back inside.
It comes before us and we, you know.
We can encourage.
Yeah.
We can discuss. That is if they'll call and talk to us about it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm just reading it a little bit differently. Sounds like you're saying that, I mean, absolutely, there's nothing we can do to stop somebody from bringing a variance. It's their right to bring a variance before the meeting. It sounds like you're giving it good, it's less good.
We're trying. We're trying to keep those down to a minimum, but it comes to that. Now, you remember the new variance form for commercial design standards, it gives you all of the things that they're asking for and the reasons for it. So they have to explain to you everything they're asking for, not us coming to you and saying, well, it's this and this and this. They tell you what they want. That puts the responsibility back on the architectural and the design firms to make sure they address it so you know what they're asking for.
I mean, I probably personally can't really give like a concrete, a, that, no other because, I mean, we get in here and something seems a little bit complicated for a variance, even if it's just one variance. I mean, I feel comfortable, you know, trying to meet it out here. I just don't, I just don't, I hear what you're saying, but I just don't know.
Yeah, there may be one thing really big versus four little things that we could, we could see.
We always want, we always tell them, we're not designing it at the table. We're not allowing you to come this, that, to this group and say, well, this is kind of what I want. Tell us what you want. That's not what the position you're in. You're not in the design business sitting at this table telling them what you want it to be. They need to bring you a proposal and you react to what's there. That's what we're trying to get to.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's my, and my big, and the last thing I'll say is that if it's an, a, an applicant initiated tabling, that I am perfectly, that's their decision. They're making the choice to table it to next month based on what they've heard us talk about here. I think it opens us up when we're, there's not any really clearly defined consistency about when we're telling somebody, when we're, you, I think you should table, when we're encouraging them to table it. I think we need to move away from encouraging people to table things. Make a decision based on what's in front of us, like you just said. If, if there's no variances with that large scale, make a vote on that large scale and they have to solve it later on. But I just, I, that, that's just giving me a little.
The position that we take, when they submit it.
Yeah.
We've discussed it. They don't get it to us. They're wanting you to take action on what's been presented.
Well, I, y'all pretty well covered it. I don't, I need to talk now. I was, I, I get what you're saying. I was a little concerned at first because I, our, our planning staff has been in the position before and probably will always be from time to time where, uh, if, if it's, if, if we're saying planning, Patsy or the staff needs to say, no, that won't work. No, you can't do that. Uh, then sometimes they get accused of saying, well, I want the commission to decide. Why, why is the staff? I mean, I mean, I've heard that a lot. So, so I, in trying to kind of protect them too, I think, I think, I think the reasonable expectation for the planning staff is no developer should ever be surprised by that recommendation Patsy gives you all.
And try not to let that happen.
They ought to know if, if, if staff's not going to recommend that, then they ought to know coming in that staff's not going to recommend that and why. I, I think that's where we would, that's what would give me more heartburn is if they thought staff was on board and then they get up here and everything's changed.
Well, here's what I would say. Well, here's what I would say if I...
It is not just planning staff. You gotta remember, these plans are reviewed by engineering, by Springdale Water, by police and fire, by building inspection, and by planning. And so sometimes we get the responsibility for tabling it when it was a different department that really said that, but it's staff as a whole has got to work together to make this work.
You had, you had one that was tabled tonight by engineer, per engineering, and, you know, I'm gonna have to work through that because I don't think they found out early enough. And so, but there are a lot of, there are a lot of pieces to that, and of course, you know, we had a holiday last week, but those aren't excuses. We need to, we need to, we're, we need to figure out how we need to run smoother and get all the, get all the pieces together, and this has been an ongoing, Ben, we, I'm sure we had these discussions when you were here.
Yeah.
And, and so, it's, you know, but people come, people go, we've got, we, but we've got some, we've got some flow issues that we need to, we need to address, and I think sometimes you all get to, get to witness that as it comes before you.
I just think, if I'm looking at AMS development here, there's not any variances on there. So that's what I'm saying, is if, if anybody was gonna be surprised, it ought to be, I would assume it would be them if they showed up and there's not, you know, I can understand if they showed up, there's variances listed, paths, you know, the, the staff has talked to them and said, hey, it's probably not gonna get approved, but it comes up here with no variances requested, presented as is, and then we encourage them to table it. That just doesn't...
Well, sometimes we get responses back that says acknowledged or noted.
Right.
What does that mean?
Yeah, sure.
If it's noted and you didn't file the forms, it didn't do any good.
Oh, yeah.
You know, try to kick things out.
Okay, you told me I'm, I'm doing it wrong.
Yeah, okay. Noted. What am I supposed to do with noted?
Let's move on.
We, we can take your recommendation, Peyton, and I, I would probably put a little bit on you as far as what you would, what you see that looking like as far as what additional information that we need to give. And Patsy, I mean, what I said earlier, I don't want you to think, the, the planning department has, has done phenomenal as far as changes and improvements of how things are addressed and, and done. I mean, I love the fact that at the end, we get a recap as far as what's going on with the city council. You know, it's, most of the time, we agree. We had two things that were overturned in that whole piece, and that's, that's, that's the purpose as far as how those, those things work in that regard. But I think where you guys probably get put into a bind is honestly, and this is my opinion, but I think you have certain groups that are trying to hit their own deadlines and putting that burden on the city in, in that whole piece. And again, these are my opinions, but I can't manage the workload of some of these engineering groups in, in that regard. And so, all I'm asking for is that we just can, you do as to the best of your ability as far as to advise them as far as, because you've come to us last minute, here's what you're gonna expect to probably have as far as an outcome of what happens with the, with the commission in, in that whole piece. And that's all you can do in, 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 in that whole piece there. This one in particular tonight, I don't know what happened as far as they presented variances, they didn't have it in the right format. I don't know where that got lost in translation in, in that whole piece.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm so sorry, go right ahead.
They get a packet with all the instructions. You gotta read it, though.
For me, is the specifics of, I, I would like to know, you know, if, if they're asking for landscaping, what specifically did they do? Did they relocate it to another place and where to try to mitigate the change? Or are they asking for an outright, we don't want it, and if, to do it, and if we don't want...
Form so that they can tell us that.
Correct. And in this case, with them, they didn't fill out the form, so we're left with something that they did not complete, their end. And I think that was the reason for that one.
Well, testify, when we table something, it creates a major stir.
Well, and I will, I will call out that have the agendas posted by Thursday the week before. And, and, and I know that you guys many times are trying to accommodate every possible thing to help things go through, but the fact is, it needs to be submitted on that Thursday before, because it doesn't give us time to really look at the packets and, and really even be able to follow up on there as far as, hey, I noticed this has nothing. Are we sure that there is nothing that, that's, and so that can help us as far as planning in advance.
The one thing I would tag on to what, what Peyton's saying, and I absolutely agree with what you're saying, but I wanna be clear, we're looking at these engineering firms that are coming in here to represent a client, and when that engineering firm steps up and doesn't know how long the back wall is, doesn't know what the material is, not really sure when it was submitted, not really sure who it was submitted to, we're, at that point, we as a body should say, okay, stop. There has to be somebody here that understands what you're presenting, that you're asking us maybe for the first time seeing, to approve on behalf of our city. So the pushback that I'm gonna give you on the tabling is, if someone steps up here to represent themselves or another body and doesn't know eighty percent of the questions, or eighty percent of the answers rather to our questions, we should as a body stop and back up and say, okay, what are we missing? That person could have been handed that packet this afternoon, we don't know. And I'm not blaming them, I'm just saying at some point in time, I have a reasonable, and we should have a reasonable expectation, that people that come before this body to represent a, a major project should have the kind of answers, pretty simple answers, I think, that we, that we demonstrated tonight, such as, how long's the back wall? I don't know.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think you're, I think that's correct. I think you're right. I would agree with that. I guess the question is, are we recommending tabling? I think this is kinda the second time you've, you've brought this up. I think you brought it up in the, I mean, no, I'm not trying to pick on...
No, no, you're true.
Are we gonna recommend tabling it, or are we gonna vote on it? I think that's where we're trying to find out how we're gonna do, or the, what the question's being asked about. I mean...
And part of it helps to understand if, if we table it, what kind of, you know, you say that that creates a stir. If we vote on it, is that better for us to vote on it and decline it?
Well, that, that's the choice staff to make standing at the table. Would they rather table it and have it paused the next time they, they come in, or do they want it denied and have to deal with that?
And that's exactly, I think, the point that Peyton was talking about, is we shouldn't guide them.
Yeah.
But at some point, we're going to have to say, look, it's A or it's B. If we table you, it causes a stir, and we don't wanna do that for anybody, but if, we're not gonna approve you based on you not knowing any of the answers we're asking.
And on large scales, if no one makes a motion, it doesn't go anywhere. So it's almost the same thing as a tabling anyway, in that whole piece. So...
That's an option. That's, it's good to know.
Let's pick this up as far as a, a work session, kinda talking through this again. I appreciate everyone staying for, and I appreciate you bringing it in there.
I didn't wanna, I wanted to mention it before I forgot it, but it's...
And as things get more busy and more complicated?
Which we hope happens.
It's happening.
In, in, in there.
I, I can tell you, there was a previous couple of planning commission members who took the position, if you had more than five comments, they weren't gonna consider it at all. And we worked really hard to get rid of the standard ones so that they didn't get penalized for standard comments that we needed every time. So they actually had five comments where things that still needed to be addressed. You guys like that position. If you got five comments left, or six, we don't put them on, we can kinda, we can, you know.
I don't think you can give it a, a specific number like that, but I think the, my guidance to answer your question is, we need a complete project to look at. If the project comes forward and it's this project except for the eight things that we didn't submit the variance on, then that's not a complete project. And so, my request for him to consider tabling it gives him the option to either table it, or he's gonna get a no vote. Now, he may prevail.
Uh-huh.
But I'm trying to get them the ability to continue, to progress and to go forward with their request to table it as opposed to a denial, which makes things difficult.
And my caution is, we don't want to leave too many things for staff to have to take care of either. Now, we're, we're not in the design business either, and we don't have time to sit down with everyone and work out every detail either.
You're not the engineering firm.
We're not the engineering firm, we're not the design firm. So you, you kinda have to be careful. It's tough.
So one of the things that we can probably do, Roy and I had an opportunity to go visit with local investors, people that flip houses and things like that, and the whole intent as far as that conversation, it was probably, what, a good two-hour conversation, and I actually stayed afterwards a little bit as well. We obviously didn't talk about anything that was brought before us in, in that regard, but it was really intended to, what should you do to be prepared to come to the planning department and to the planning division? And Sarah, we covered on there as far as that, us being at a location together on that one, but...
We already covered that.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I saw you back there going, oh. But I think it was well received as far as, thank you for educating. Thank you for, you know, putting a human side to the, how things can actually present it. We might wanna do that with a lot of the engineering firms locally within the region as far as, here's how you can better serve yourself as far as when you come before this. And they know it, but many times it's probably a good reminder.
More importantly, here's how you can better serve your client who's paying you to come here and represent you, and when you don't show up knowing any of the, or when you show up not knowing eighty-five percent of the answers, here's what that does to your project. To Ben's point, you now stop the train, and that costs money.
Because the workload that we're seeing here growing, they're seeing it equally on their side. So it's not one of those who just wanna pass it down the pipeline and hope it gets resolved, 'cause my observation is, is many times people will do that to show progress to the client, but is it still fair to the clients? Maybe not, in, in that whole piece on it. So we'll talk through this more. I do appreciate you bringing it up. I'm not sure where this really needs to be addressed. I think probably more with some of the engineering firms in the community, and we'll work through, Sarah, as far as how we can present and be in, in discussions with them in, in that regard. So any other comments or questions? Well, I wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you so much for a, a great year in Springdale. I think you guys have seen reports as far as how the revenue of the city has just continued to blossom, and it's, it's across the entire region, and we look forward to that same type of growth and success in Springdale in 2020. So have a safe holiday season, and we'll see you in the next year.